I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with him. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you and we ask that you be with us tonight. We invite your presence among us and just invoke your blessing upon us. Father, continue to lead and guide us and direct us. I pray that you be with us as we go into this new year. We thank you for the things that we're saying, the things that are being done in this city and how your blessing. Father, continue to bless the city and the people of the city. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I'm willing right along. We'll start this evening, this meeting with opportunity for citizens to address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda. Those of you that are here would like to address the city council or welcome to step to the podium, state your name and address and whatever your concerns might be. Is there anyone who'd like that opportunity? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the January 13th city council meeting, claims for city operation, and claims for public housing authority. Anything to be pulled by the citizens? Staff? Questions or concerns for the council? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kiff?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to old business. Item number one, ordinance 2487, animal control and regulation. You want me to table the per capita?
I'm Erin, the animal control officer. We have the final edit of the ordinance. We changed the minor errors with the dangerous dog ordinance and section of the ordinance. So if you have any further questions, would you have the answer?
Thank you. We do this quite a bit. Thank you. Anything to add from other city staff? Citizens' concerns? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2487 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, we'll start here.
Clear or not, I'm good this time. I have a couple of them, actually. But I was going to state, sort of for the record, because I know that it came up a bunch. Section 2-201, registration of animals over six months of age. It says, registering at Bonner Springs Police Department within 30 days of acquisition. I was curious if there's, we're going to send out any sort of notice for a lot of these? And the reason why I've got three others on here, or if we could do an email blast or something, just to notify the public of all the different changes?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's a change.
That one's not a change from our standard as far as if they're over six months, they already have to be registered within 30 days.
Gotcha.
So that's, that one has to.
I guess we need to write.
I was going to say, I do know that first of the year, usually the staff has done a very good job of using, putting it out on Facebook and Twitter. Registration is required.
Okay.
And then, the last time I was to the vet, they indicated, they told me whether, when it had to be, when it had to be registered.
Yeah.
So I would imagine.
There's like a 90-day period there before the 1st of March or something.
Now, it's 30. The ordinance has 30.
Well, that's for those ones that are really acquired.
Correct, yeah. The others on here, I know I got a lot of questions about this personally, was chickens. Chris was nice enough to let me read through this. And the, it was 2-302. Somebody's want to look this up in the future. It's section two, and limitation for keeping poultry. I don't know if this is a change or an addition or what, but you can get a permit. And there is a whole bunch, there's a whole section of stuff for turkey, or for poultry, keeping the chickens at 25 foot within the house. And how we have to house them. I bring this up because I know I've got a couple of papers and things that have asked questions about it. 2-305, nuisance animals, subsection B. I was, one I was going to bring up is, in there I noticed that it said, if an animal was provoked or defending a human being in the immediate vicinity, it's not what our ordinance pertains to, the fact that it is not instantly considered a nuisance animal. I've had rental situations where that's been an issue. People have brought it up and then worry about it, or things along those lines. Same thing with 2-306, dangerous animals. Anybody that's worried about that, or they have a bite situation, that's one, as I mentioned, I kind of put these out there for myself. So I pull back the video and remember them in the future for rental situations. Because it's got dangerous animals, subsection four, are the signs that have to be posted for dangerous animals. Number five was one I honestly wasn't aware of. The million-dollar entrance and policy that is required by our city part of this ordinance at subsection six. Identification. I also wasn't aware of this one, that a photo has to be taken within 10 days and given to, I believe, the lease department. And that's one, I'm going to have to have to send my contacts to certain quarters. Another thing that I didn't see an issue with, but I know will be brought up eventually, is the, I just played this page off, so I don't know which part of it was. But it was from the chickens element, it was the permitting of the chickens. The officer shall grant a permit for poultry after the applicant has obtained the written consent of at least 60% of the owners or occupants privately or publicly owned real estate that are located adjacent, sharing property lines on the outer boundaries of the premises for which the permit is being requested. Or, in the alternative, prove that the applicant's property lines are 100, or 150 feet or more from any house or business. Conditions? Another note, it was in here, that I'll, I know we'll all need to bring up eventually, is the city clerk and the police department, if they see fit, or it's a problem, can notify the tenant or owner of the chickens and without further prosecution or whatever, under their jurisdiction, can have the permit removed for chickens. And I think that was all my, I just knew I needed to mark some of these. File my correct, thanks.
Any other concerns?
Yeah, just.
No concern, thanks.
Thank you.
That was extensive. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, along that line, in my neighborhood, there's someone that has chickens they have for years and years, and it's agricultural property. But that doesn't bother them, does it?
I believe if it's two acres or more, then you're allowed to have them.
Yeah.
But if it's more than residential property.
That's what I thought. I thought of, I know somebody will have them in my neighborhood.
Yep, exactly.
I think that was, from what I read, seemed to be the, and then as the property gets larger, you have more ability to have more poultry. And it goes over pretty extensively how those cages can be situated on the property. And I think that's part of what. One, I looked in there, roosters are prohibited.
Correct.
Anyway. And I'm not a poultry expert. It tastes great, is all I know. Do they need roosters to perpetuate?
In order to reproduce, they do, yes. And we prohibit them just because of noise and like, kind of nuisance.
They don't need roosters to create eggs, right?
No.
Except there isn't such a strict answer.
Okay, so if it was a farming operation, you'd have to get a permit or have enough space for roosters other than subdivision.
Once you start getting into more agricultural business, the state laws start to prevail a little bit more. You get into confined animal feeding lots and things like that. What we're trying to do is just more from the standpoint of, you know, residential rooster that nobody wants to listen to at 6:00 AM in the morning going on. Some people do.
There's one out there.
Must be wild. They are wild?
Yeah.
Roosters in our neighborhood. But I'm usually up anyway, so.
Apologize. No other questions, concerns? Seeing none, vote please.
Kiff?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Want me to excuse myself?
Yeah, I hurt myself.
Okay, to new business. Item number one, we have Windout Economic Development Council Agreement. Who will break the presentation?
Oh, we can get video, huh?
Well, just a quick presentation. Thank you all for having us. I'm Greg Kendall, I'm the president of the Windout Economic Development Council. Appreciate you all taking some time to learn just a little bit more about us. I also have our team here with us this evening. Carrie Lynn is our investor relations coordinator and executive assistant. She's also an alum of Bonner Springs School System. I have Marcia Harrington, who I think most of you all know. She's our senior director of workforce solutions and business retention expansion. And then John Sowarszak is our newest member. He's our business retention expansion coordinator. So as you can tell, out of the four folks we have, most of our focus is really on retention expansion of the companies that we have here in Windout County. And so we just thought we'd do a quick overview of what we got going on. Thank you as well, Sean, and everybody for having us too. So, our mission essentially is to grow the economy through whatever programs, whatever processes, whatever ways we have to go about it, whatever we have to partner with to make that happen. We do that just here in Windout County. I think it is important to note that we look forward to seeing the projects. So if a company is in Bonner, our goal is to keep it in Bonner. If it can't stay in Bonner for whatever reason, then we want to keep it in Windout County. And that holds true across the county. We have a project right now that we're working with that is in another part of the county that it may not be able to stay there. And so a good opportunity may be here in Bonner Springs. We focus on four key areas. The attraction side, which is the part that captures most of the headlines. And then the second part is the retention expansion side, which is where we do spend most of our time. We believe it's the most expensive way to grow the economy. Most of the companies we have here are all growing. They've been growing for a lot of years, we've had a lot of expansion opportunities. And so we spend a lot of time on keeping the companies that we have. The marketing promotion side, we'll go just about anywhere. They will listen to us, no matter how many folks there are. We do that in a lot of different ways, whether it's print media, face-to-face, we travel, and then workforce solutions. So we spend a larger amount of our time on the workforce solution side now. We're spending probably half of our time as a total team around the workforce solution side of it. And you'll see that in the written materials as well, that we spend a lot more time in that side of it, trying to understand our workforce. Where's the growth opportunities, where are the wages, where are employment opportunities within the county itself? And so we spend a great deal of time trying to coordinate that with our partners, school districts, college, and those folks. So we are a nonprofit organization, we were founded in 1992. This is our board for 2020. The three mayors all sit on our board, with the mayor Harrington. We've got a pretty good cross-section of public and private. We look at what kind of industries there are, folks who are doing deals, doing development in the county. And that ultimately ends up making our board. We're fairly nimble organization, which allows us to adapt to the changing market. We have about 104 investors currently, public and private. Most of the public entities, as you can tell, in the cities. We work with Board of Public Utilities, so we have a contract with all of our community partners. And that's one of the things we're looking at to do with you all as well. It actually gives us an extra layer of protection, particularly in the case of media or other inquiry. It's more of a contractual relationship rather than, say, a granting or a membership investment. So we have contracts with the Board of Public Utilities, Edwardsville, and the Unified Government as well. And then you've got, along with Windout Health Foundation, are a big contributor to our workforce solutions efforts. And then you see some of our platinum and titanium members as well. And we have gold and bronze investors. So this is kind of an overview of the results over the last 10 years. We've had a phenomenal run. In the years that we dropped off, 2009, 2008, we were in the $100 million, $140 million range. Today, we stay pretty close to that $400 million to $500 million mark on a regular basis. In 19, $433 million. This year, on the job totals, about 474 jobs either retained or brought new as a part of the investments. And about 1.2 million square feet. And we've been as high as 2.5 million square feet leased during construction over the last several years. 1.2 is actually probably a little bit lighter than we've seen in the last few years. Part of that has to do with the fact that we have a lot less available product than we have had in the years past. We're constantly trying to find additional product. So we're only as good as the product that we have available to us to meet the market conditions. And so looking for land sites, available industrial buildings in particular. If you've been out looking at all, you'll know that there are very few industrial buildings on the market for sale in particular. And it's hard to find leasable space as well. Most of Fairfax, when I came on board about eight years ago, had a pretty significant amount of property available in the Fairfax area. And today, it's very difficult to find any property in the Fairfax area that's available. This is just kind of a slide, we do keep a pretty significant database of sites and buildings. But this is a slide we keep fairly active in terms of our largest sites that are for development. And I wanted to throw this in here because I think it's important to see how the K7 corridor is beginning to pop up, where we see development at. There are many, many small sites and sites that are under consideration across the county. But this gives you a feel for the kinds of sites that we're pitching to projects that come into the community on a regular basis. And we work with the Kansas City Development Council and make a membership with those folks. We have a relationship with Kansas Department of Commerce. We have third-party lead generator that we work with. And then we have another consulting agreement that we just initiated as well to try to drag leads into the organization. But as you can tell, it's, it used to be that all industrial projects were largely located, say, in the Fairfax area. Or you might see them in Muncie. And now you're seeing more and more of those larger sites shift to the west. As I mentioned, we spend quite a bit of our time on the retention expansion side. Our goal with the team is to call on at least 125 companies a year. And these aren't what I call grocery store calls. These are fairly intense, consistent survey tool that we use called Synchronist. It's a nationally utilized survey tool. We are a master user of that tool. This past year, the team made about 154 of those retention calls. And from that, we can gather information about what their market share is. Are they producing new products? Are they planning on bringing new products, since it's going to change in administration? Are they investing in R and D? All of these things, within about four or five questions, we can get a pretty good sense for whether that company is headed on the right path or if there should be a challenge as well. You can see, one of the challenges that our team has is that 7% introduces new product, new products. We should be seeing that number much higher. And one of the things that we did this past year is call on a lot of smaller companies. And so the result, a lot of those folks are also older, they're smaller, and they tend to be focused on getting product out today as opposed to focusing on what they might even buy in five years. And so one of the things we'll be looking at is how do we ensure that these companies do have a game plan? Keep introducing new products, to focus on R and D, open up new markets. If you're not expanding, you're shrinking in today's market. And the biggest part of this is really automation technology and those investments. So if they're not investing in that innovation technology, then we need to be figuring out how we help them do that. And these guys keep a pretty good handle on that. Understanding our average wage is important, because we keep track of wages by industry set. So as you saw, can see in your materials, we look at how many jobs we are employing each of the various sectors across the county, and then where the wages in each one of those sectors, which gives us a pretty good guidance in terms of what companies should be paying. So if somebody comes in, in the logistics side, and says, "I want to pay $12 an hour," that's certainly their prerogative. But they're, one, not going to qualify probably for any public incentives from the state level. But two, if you're not paying at least $13.50 in the logistics industry in Windout County today, you're going to have a fairly significant amount of churn. Or you have a culture that people really, really like. There's usually some sort of trade-off. It's not until you get to certain wage points that you sort of see that churn level reduce. And in this environment, as you all know, keeping the workforce in one that's going to show up every day is important. So we keep a pretty significant effort in that, in that area. As I mentioned, we spend a great deal of time on the workforce solution side. We have adopted a new metric, which is to increase the median household income in Windout County to that at the state level, which currently is $58,218. When we first started tracking this back in 2015, as you can see, we're 95th out of 105 counties. I don't know whether it was, you know, just good luck, or if we've actually been doing some programming that helps with our job, connecting Windout Countyans to the jobs we created. But we have seen a continual improvement in our median household income. It's one of the few times that I've ever said, "I just want to be average, be in the middle," because that would at least get to the middle four time. So, part of the reason that this is even more important is that we are usually in our top one or second or third in terms of wages paid. So we have very high wages paid in Windout County. But our household income, despite all the investments, you saw that slide, where all these great investments were being made, and our wages are great, but our median household income, the money that people take home, was not as strong as we would like it. And so we are now spending a lot more time trying to figure out how we can better let Windout Countyans know about the jobs that are available. One of those that we're working on currently is a faith-based outreach. To get the churches a little more engaged, help them understand what jobs may be available to them, and the parishioners. In the hopes that they know on the ground level, parishioners who may be able to do more, or maybe looking for a new job, or just know more about their parishioners than we do. And that's just one of the number of programs we're working on. But our goal here is to keep moving this up. Windout County is fortunate in that we do have a lot of opportunities for growth and for movement. Many of the counties across Kansas are either stagnant in terms of population growth, stagnant in terms of the types of companies that they will bring in. We are at a tages position in that we continue to see steady growth.
Greg, is UG included in these wage numbers?
Absolutely. These are county-wide numbers. So this is not specific to you, but I should have a slide I think coming up.
Well, I mean, UG as a company?
Oh.
Or as the employees of UG? Is that included in these numbers?
Well, it will be if there, because all UG employees live in the county, so they're. So when they only increase their wages, say, by one or two percent, it puts a little bit of a lube on the overall average, right? Because we need to keep seeing significant growth in our wages. So we have noted that when they do a good pay raise, it does help the overall county wages, because those folks literally like to be awesome. So this is the Bonner Springs, this is really not information that you don't know. But we do like to keep it updated and make sure that when we are specifically talking about, say, Bonner Springs, that we keep a pretty good profile of what your educational level is coming out of, out of the school district, how educated the population is, what the household income is in Bonner Springs. Obviously, the population here are, the median household income of $59,000 is in fact a far lower than the state average. So Bonner Springs is helping to pull the overall median household income up. It's not probably a surprise to any of us. I did think it was interesting that 16% of the children under 18 are considered to be in poverty, which is higher than I would have expected. It's about 26 countywide, 26%, which is slightly lower than I actually thought that we were probably looking at in the county as a whole. And then I also broke out the primary jobs. Not surprising, your largest percent of jobs are the retail sector. And then followed by the hotel, accommodation, food side of it, so that's not surprising. And then manufacturing. So we've got a big core of businesses here in Bonner that pay pretty well, they have pretty steady companies, and employ a good amount of talent. Overall, looks pretty good. Obviously, we do marketing to all kinds of different groups and folks. This is an ad we had in a, in a recent airline ad, where we addressed head-on this issue of being a flyover community. And so we just addressed that, addressed that head-on. It's kind of hard to see here, this is actually a map of the US, Canada, and Mexico. We just recently came back from an outreach effort in Mexico, tracking which companies come up in this area. And so we translate things into Spanish. We try to be as consistent with our message wherever we're going. And then kind of a play on the wind-up thing with things like that. So we'll do just about anything, we'll kind of cater it and tailor however we need to. But we are, we have a design firm that we work with to help us produce our materials and make sure that we look as professional and as top-notch as any other organization that may be a lot larger than us. And then lastly, this is kind of an overview of the proposed agreement. Largely, it's many of the things that we are already doing, for the most part. It's just putting it down on paper and formalizing it, along with making sure we give a presentation to you all at least annually. We'd be happy to come back as soon as you want to talk specifically about specific areas. But making sure that we're collaborating on projects both directions, so it's a two-way street. Really kind of utilizing us for a consultative role, which is very similar to how Edwardsville and Unified Government uses as well. It depends on the project in terms of what our needs are. There are times when we work directly with utility, based on our history with utility. We can play in that role sometimes. Other times, it's for finding a site or a building. Other times, it's just to be a intermediary. And sometimes it's just to sort of sit back and let the project go forward. We do obviously a lot of marketing and outreach, so making sure that if it is in fact a Bonner Springs-specific project, that we're marketing it specifically to Bonner Springs, making sure we're really focusing on that. We've had some projects, there's a land project we're looking at, that's exactly how we kind of pitch that, to show how Bonner Springs is sort of, in this case, the epicenter for all other things that happen. And then maintaining a sites database, our location and information system is the system we use. Providing that data and research that we have at our disposal. Making sure that we have regular communication. So the easiest way to do that is just to formalize it for elite team meetings, make sure we're keeping each other up to date, talking with you guys, maintaining a good economic profile, and overall, just making sure we have good communication and collaboration, which we appreciate. We thank you all. And I know I've seen council member Mac, he had a number of our quarterly meetings, our annual meeting recently. You're always welcome at any of our board, investor meetings, quarterly meetings, and whatever you all need is good with us. We just want to make sure that we have a good relationship. I think that's it. Any questions?
Does anyone have anything at all?
Other than, as Greg alluded to, there is a, the agreement, proposed agreement is attached, or was attached with the agenda. So we are looking for approval from you all to execute that agreement. I believe it's an annual agreement, correct? So that'd be something that we would look at annually as far as continuing to make any tweaks here or there, likely at the end of each calendar year.
Anybody from the audience would like to comment at all?
I think it's my team, right?
Well, they commented, they want to. If not, well, but now I entertain a motion. If I'm one of you. Chairman? I am, yes. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a cooperation agreement with Windout Economic Development Council and authorize staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Moving to the second, we'll start over there with Roger. Any comments, concerns, questions?
No, this looks, this looks good.
Mr. Mackey?
Greg, it's only 6,000 annually, how do you guys sustain yourself if that's respectful?
We are about 50/50, public-private. So we have a diversified school revenue. Obviously, our largest contract is with Unified Government. They're about $250,000. And then, City of Edwardsville has a contract with us as well, or Public Utilities has a, utilizes us to conduct their projects. And then about half of it comes from private sector investors. We're growing our revenue stream through the workforce side as well. So we're investing a little more time on that side of it, but diversifying as we go.
So is it?
About an $800,000 budget total.
So you're like, consultations or like, you base money per contract, or?
Well, two different streams. So on the investment side, you've got folks like J. Don or KDS who's doing work with this, that are members of our organization with the anticipation that they will learn more about projects coming into the community. A relationship we have with Kansas Manufacturing Solutions is to support our manufacturing institutions. So what we drill, for instance, to make sure that we are supporting that institution as a manufacturer, and to bring them in if they need space engineering, or they need help with anything. Those monies then come through a federal sort of stream of money. So we've kind of diversified a little bit over the last several years.
So we've kind of diversified a little bit over the last several years.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
I love the connection of every aspect of the, of the communities. I mean, daddy childcare, transfer to everything.
That's something new for us. We've done the last couple of years, just focus on what barriers to workforce and trying to figure out how we help get our talent better connected. But that's not an area we ever planned to spend much time on. It's just we found ourselves and the market has changed.
Does the other cities, do they pay different, Edwardsville, do they have a different level of cooperation or is there tiers, titanium and platinum?
Oh, no, the cities all are, we treat all the cities the same. The amount they pay is maybe different based on the history of how it works in the community. But there's no special levels for communities or all three of them.
So they're not a different level of engagement? Like if we wanted to work on a land project or something, we don't engage you on a different level or?
Oh, shit suggests that, Sean. That's a great idea.
It's a great idea. We should have that a rain block.
No, apparently it's just a, is a flat annual F P that we negotiate and try to make it work in the city.
Okay. Good to hear. Kind of thinking back to what Mr. Kip said, if new projects, you know, you're contacted by a company, how do you prioritize what areas, since you're working with three different entities, how do you prioritize where you go looking for?
Right. Well, we ask the client, number one, what does the client want? So if they say, well, we're just sort of interested in properties, say 20 acres or larger, light industrial, we'll ask, you know, how much office, right? Because there's certain locations in Bonner Springs in particular, that we're not going to want to see a heavy manufacturing facility unless or but for it has a significant office piece and we can kind of use it to buffer. If there is, if there isn't, say, office component or some, look or feel, we'll say, look, we can inquire of the city administration. Our feeling is that they're probably going to say no for these sites for these purposes and go on to other locations. On the whole, we're not saying, what we're going to do is bring a project into Wyandotte County. Initially, don't care where, we're going to give every option that we have. And we will over submit sites rather than under, because we want to give ourselves the best opportunity possible. Companies change their mind all the time, and they're, what they tell us there are their drivers for why they locate into a community, often are very different on email than we give them personally. We have seen people who have made decisions based on family member being in the area or family member not being in the area. We've had a fantastic role, but they had family that was in Atlantic, so they ended up in Atlantic, and that was a terrible. That's a decision that they have to make. Our goal is, as a funneling occurs, they're taking in all these sites, our goal is to try to not eliminate, right? In the site selection, folks, their goal is to eliminate them, and we try to figure out what that is.
So when it comes to locations, you're looking at those independent of the entity that, that property resides within. You just look at the property itself?
That's right. But we never want to overcommit the city to something that we'll leave to tell a company, absolutely, Bonner Springs will love this project, knowing full of it probably won't. We don't ever want to overcommit any side. The good news is, in our position as public-private and being a, in a consultative role, we can always fall on our sword. Even if we go right up to the end, into the line, and we're saying, yeah, this seems like a great project, if Sean says, I don't have the support for this project, we can fall on our sword and say, you know, it's been worked. Don't hold that against the city that's, we need to understand. I say that on occasion, I have nothing to say.
And then if we have certain properties that we like to try to find, a, you know, a company for those properties, does that involve you going out and searching, or does that really fall more on TARP, Economic Development?
It's a partnership. So we work closely. Anytime we do a retention call, our goal is to always ensure that Amber's involved. That way, there's no surprises for anybody. We ask the same questions the same way every single time. We do get a company coming in, of course. Cities are almost always knowledgeable of what we're doing. They may or may not be on that initial tour. There are times when they've already done a significant amount of research long before we've done, they're kind of, so that's why we keep a lot of information on our website. But at the end of the day, the goal is to try to find the right spot for the company and for the city, because that's, that's the only way to get a good, a good long-term solution is, both parties are happy. Because incentives, usually that's what comes up. We still use the old but fourth test. I'm still old school in that regard, that incentives only make a good project better. No incentive or level of incentives makes a bad project. We're fairly conservative in that as well. So we will always say, this is what historically a community provides in this type of situation, and then we can go from there. Because you can always go up. It's hard to get them back.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, oh, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
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 Much faster.
Sign it.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate the presentation. And then if my interest Sergeant Marshall into treating Mayor Harrington.
Hold on.
Look at that. I have to kick back to you.
I hope I wasn't too disruptive. I'll wait. Come to item number two, code enforcement report.
Stephen?
I'm Mark Mandel. I'm with IVTS, and we have a contract with the city to provide primarily construction services, plan review inspections, and we also do have a component that does code enforcement and property maintenance. And the city staff asked us, so probably a year ago, to help with kind of a comprehensive view of the city. And we've been working with Mark on code enforcement and kind of doing a double team where we're going out and looking at the building stock, the housing stock, along with him on code enforcement activities such as trash, dung cars, weeds, and those kinds of things. And I need to apologize, because I'm the one that's tasked with looking at the staff's activities on a daily basis. And I, we've had a busy construction season, so I prioritize construction activity more so than your code enforcement activity, and I apologize. I put the staff in kind of an offered position, because we haven't hit the ground running with this activity. We're moving into a slower construction season, and now I have more staff. So I'm going to be able to devote more time to this activity, get it back on track, and we'll work with staff on reporting with them on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, whatever they choose. And I'm here to answer any questions, get some guidance from you, criticism, whatever we can do to help. But I do, again, I want to apologize, because we did not perform as well as I would have liked.
Very good. Do you have anything else to add? Much to give anything else to add as far as what things are out on your end?
I've been doing city boy's week, going through there. About 95% done with house-to-house checking. Starting to go back over to some of the other areas that were more concerning than others, so we're doing that pretty well. I actually made up some flyers. I don't know if you had one of the process of what I do when a complaint comes in, how it's handled, and how it gets from me to inspection, and then to the court system if you guys want to move this.
It'd be great.
Yeah.
May I put some simple words on how they come in, how a complaint comes in, what the process that I do, and how it gets from myself to the courts, or IVTS is involved with it also, and how, how they handle it from there, so.
Very good. Well, I know a lot of why we enlisted the assistance, we were starting with a new program, more or less, of codes enforcement, and wanted to make sure that not only our organizations were appropriate and up to date, but also the enforcement of it. And there were certain properties in our community that were more of a concern than others, and those have been through the process. But this is a situation, codes enforcement, that when there's a difficulty, that breeds more difficulties. And so we wanted to empower our codes enforcement with all the tools they needed to be successful. So hopefully, with IVTS, we can make sure that we're as prepared as possible, not only in our review of the entire community, but also the process that we go through to make sure that our community and our lifestyle is protected. Is that how you're, how you think to help our program?
Yes. We can help administering the program as well as the technical staff that you need to go out and do the assessments in the field, address those concerns, work with the property owners to bring their buildings into compliance. If we don't get satisfactory results there, then we can opt for other remedies, which include going to court. And Kansas State statutes let the city get pretty aggressive when it comes to dealing with a vacant or air-lit building.
Some of the areas that have difficulty with, they get a notice and then do just enough to get a stay, and then have to be re-noticed and another stay, and a re-notice and another stay. So those habitual concerns are, make such an impact on our community that we wanted to try and get the professional expertise on how we're going to get this.
And that's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, because if you have a property that meets the definition, say, of a dangerous building, they can take a minimal amount of steps so that it doesn't meet the dangerous building any longer, but it can still set vacant. And so when we get to that point, then we have to come up with other tools, other remedies that we might be able to use to get compliance.
Do you think that's where you see this program going?
No, most of what...
Okay. And is that how you can both best utilize that kind of professional assistance?
Yeah. But most, most of your building stock is fairly decent, really. You have some deferred maintenance issues, gutters falling off the building, those kinds of things. And a lot of times, we can get compliance with the people. Sometimes we get it by talking to them. They'll see us out in the yard, around the street, and they'll come up to see what we're up to. And we say, well, you know, we're looking at this, and these things need attention. And a lot of times, that's all it takes to get them in gear to do things. Now, we still go ahead and do something a little bit more formal, but if we can have a conversation with the yard, it's not as threatening and...
Well, I have to compliment Mark specifically. He's very good at communicating with our, the people in our community. So I appreciate all that you've done and the finesse it takes to do that. Your background has given you a lot of ability in that area, too, so thank you. But it's a thankless, well, thank you, or otherwise thankless job. But it's, it's very important and appreciated. It's, we're committed to doing this and staying on top of it. So this is something that we appreciate, your involvement, and we're going to continue to need that, those updates and that evaluation of this program as we develop. We're going to have to help.
Good. Be a good question, too. Swift.
Swift, please.
Mark, one of the things that I've been involved in is Renaissance Festival. So last fall, when the notice went out that those grounds would be inspected, the flare gun went off in every direction. I'm still being asked if those inspections have taken place.
We've had a half a dozen business owners contact us. A lot of them leave town, and they go to the next festival. And I was on the phone last week with a lady, and when, when the weather gets warm, she hit the back this way, we're going to get together. I imagine in the spring, as those vendors start to think about this upcoming season, that we'll get a lot of phone calls.
So there was some conflicting information. Have you done a pass-through and have contacted people who might have things that need attention? Or do you need access to each and every property?
We have done a walkthrough of the grounds in kind of a casual manner, and we have asked that we get access to each of the units, so we can look inside just to make sure that we don't have improper use of extension cords and...
That's changed.
You know, the wiring. We're not, a lot of those places are 40 years old, and they were never built any type of standard to begin with. And so we're not going to go in there and say, you don't meet any codes, we're shutting you down. What we're doing is walking in, going, you've got a bare wire there that needs to be dealt with, you've got a broken board here. It's more of a maintenance-type issue than really a, a building code inspection.
The information of this community has gone between, we're just going to look at the outside and refer things to, we do need access to each, so I actually lose some clarification on that. Thank you.
We're getting, you may have mentioned the seasons are changing. We're getting ready for weed season, and that's always a constant concern with every community, but especially ours. So we'll need to be prepared early for that weed enforcement issue.
Let me see if I can ask. I know in the past, we used a policy, follow policy, that if you were, received a complaint, you would also do a visual check of other homes right around that. With this new relationship, do we still follow that philosophy? Okay. So other homes, you receive complaints, you will visually check other homes that are around, okay? I think that's important.
Yes.
So you are assisting Mark and his efforts, and you are also out there, your company, you're out there on the ground, working with the property owners also, because that's what I'm understanding personally. And then working through him to process these complaints and shortcomings as...
Mr. Mandel, I wanted to mention that. I appreciate you guys coming on. I know whenever you first started working with IVTS, there was a lot of citizen and contractor worries about you guys taking over, and I wanted to give you guys compliments. Anytime I've ever called you, you've always gotten back to me within, I mean, even an hour or two, as well as all of your staff has always been excellent, cordial, I mean, super quick and willing to answer questions on the desk, like even on the job. What you guys do, Mr. Starch, you're both doing, you both deserve to thank you for what's going on.
Well, appreciate that. Thank you. It's a service business.
Correct.
So we have to keep that in mind.
Shannon?
Oh, yeah.
Nothing? All right. Nothing else, Dan? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
On to item number three, a resolution for nuisance and vacant. Speaking of that...
First time on a resolution and everything like that for a vacant property. The property is actually, they're doing a fairly good job of it right now, getting it cleaned up. They've probably done 90% clean up on it. Still, we still need to do the resolution and pass it, just in case the last 10% doesn't get taken care of. So we have something to fall back on if it doesn't get...
Mark, I'm glad you brought that up. The reason is, I'm sitting here looking at the...
What you guys do, Mr. Stotich, are both doing, you both deserve to thank you for what's going right.
We appreciate that. Thank you. It's a service business. We have to keep that in mind.
Nothing else to add? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Onto item number three, a resolution for nuisance and abatement. Speaking of that.
First time on a resolution and everything like that for an abatement on a property. The property is actually, they're doing a fairly good job of it right now. We're getting it cleaned up. We're probably about 90% cleaned up on it. Still, we still need to do the resolution and pass it just in case the last 10% doesn't get taken care of. So we have something to fall back on if it doesn't get...
Mark, I'm glad you brought that up. The reason is, I'm sitting here looking at the background information. This has been going on for a long, long time. And I know in this person's information that the date of January... Let's get this on the floor to discuss first. I'm sorry, sir.
No problem.
Do you have anything else to add on the presentation? Anything else from the staff, citizens that want to address this topic? Seeing that I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution to abate the code issue at 13631 Lawrence property. If not resolved within 10 days, from mailing notice.
Moving second. We'll start with you, Mr. Shannon. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Mark. That according to the information that has been provided to all of us, that on January 7th of previous year, okay, which was a little over a year ago, that you received a code violation, courtesy code violation. And three months later, you received a second one. And then also they brought more materials in. And then on the 4th of April, I mean, 11th of April of 2019, you appeared in court. And since that time, we have had continuance after continuance. Am I right so far? Okay. And you're bringing this to us. "What part of 'Thou shall not' does that man not understand?" And that's the thing that's been bothering me, that we have, not only this gentleman, I wouldn't know if I saw him, and nothing against him personally, but I think this abatement is very much needed to provide you with what you need to do to expedite because the first violation that he received in January of last year was because of stuff that had been there since 2018. And it's still been a year. And we're talking about giving, you know, he's doing, he's cleaning it up, he's cleaning it up. It's been a year. And I'm hoping that, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but on this abatement, that things like this can be expedited. And I know the court is a different situation, but seeing the continuances that we've been faced with in our city over the years makes it difficult on you, on our police, on our entire city, and all our families. I don't know how much this will expedite, maybe consolidate, but I hope it does something because our families, as well as all of you, deserve the right to see things that are, you know, carried through. I realize we can't get it done in an hour, or probably on TV, but I do feel that this is, this is very appreciated because this is just a perfect example.
And it's a very small percentage of people that it gets to this point with cleanup. Most of them on the chart after the re-inspection. If I were to give, I mean, officially, any kind of progress whatsoever, I wish it was 25% of the review. If they've done 25% cleanup, I would give a continuance on my own. So it's very rare that it gets to the level of needing to abate the property ourselves.
Well, that just, that kind of shows to the character of our families here that there are those that just need the reminder and...
Those are the rare ones that we have.
You have a problem, then it's a problem. Sir?
I have to kind of agree with Mr. Stotich in that I think, I'm glad to hear that the owner is making an effort to get it cleaned up and he's made such progress and hopefully finished. And I think they need to understand that doing this is not about us trying to be the bad guy. It's trying to protect the neighbors, the community around, those who surround us. So I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and pass the resolution just as the extra tool that you have to hopefully the job to complete it.
Yeah, because you've been very patient with the man, with his family, whoever lives there. And we thank you for that. And we thank you for bringing us to this point where, you know, the rubber hits the road. And I know it's a difficult situation for you in the past. And we're thanking for everything that you've done. Hopefully, this will be a lesson learned by him and maybe some others in the community that say, "Oh, okay, this is going to happen." And maybe this will help eliminate some of those problems in the future for you.
Anything else? Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Finn?
Yes.
Matthew?
Stay.
Wood? Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number four, public housing authority fee, carbon monoxide detector batteries.
This is from Mayor Kravitz and PHA. So the smoke, or carbon monoxide detector battery, we're just asking to add that to our fee schedule. We already charge for smoke detector batteries. They take a nine volt, so they, we charged them five. That was approved about three years ago. The carbon monoxide detector is just a AAA, so they're a little cheaper, which is why the price is a little lower. Since they're similar objects, we are just asking that the residents, like smoke detectors, are also responsible for the batteries in those. As in many states, we installed them all at once. And we were burdened with cost and labor when they all went out at once. So the good news is those batteries lasted about a year. So the residents wouldn't have much. It's just more of the time and cost that it takes a staff of two to replace all of those batteries. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anything else to add from staff, citizens? You've had, I didn't entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve paying a $3 fee for replacing batteries in carbon monoxide detectors to the PHA to date the schedule.
Second. Moving second. Questions, concerns, comments?
I'm curious, with, I'm in Brownell as well. Do you know why you guys don't use a lithium low-profile smoke detector by chance? Were you aware of that? There's a low-profile lithium battery unit that lasts approximately 10 years. I've installed, never had one go out. And they're about 10 to 15 a unit. And if we, if I needed to get together with you guys outside of this, I'd be more happy to. It would save you guys the labor and the recurring cost.
Is that smoke detector or carbon monoxide?
It's smoke detector for, the low-profile smoke detector. I believe there's also a non-low-profile option you could do. Again, they are low-profile. I have problems with people smoking in the units and trying to take them apart.
You too?
Yeah. Yeah, I never. And one way we fixed that and remediated it was with these units, they also have a rail key in it, a little plastic piece you click in there. And you, it makes it, it's at least one more step for somebody to remove it. Because we had a problem with that and had to try to get it repaired.
I would definitely be interested in that.
Yeah, I'll give, yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do the residents have the option of changing the batteries themselves?
Yes. So this is just if they want us to supply the batteries and go do it. If they have the batteries but aren't comfortable taking the thing off the wall or whatnot, we'll still go and do it free of charge and just install the batteries that they provide to us. So I guess.
Does that put us on any more liability? Is that standard operating procedure? Either we take care of or they take care of it? Is that clearly stated that it's their responsibility?
Yes. Yeah, they are...
If something happens, we aren't liable for some sort of reason?
Right. Yeah. And they, it's in the lease for the smoke detectors also, but they're responsible for those. And we check them. We do, we check both when we do unit inspections also so that we make sure that we stay on top of them, make sure that they're not working. Because even with smoke detectors, we'll walk in and they won't have a battery in there, smoke detector. Well, obviously, yeah, well, obviously, that's an issue. So we watch out for stuff like that also.
Thank you for asking me. That's why I was interested.
Nothing else? Vote please.
Please?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood? Motion passes.
Onto the item number five, public housing authority five-year plan.
Carrie PHA again. So this is actually only due every five years. So this is my first one. I'm coming up on my five years next month. So the plan, my HUD lady has also noticed, this is a little late. We were both kind of dropped the ball on it. But they shortened it drastically from what I was saying what they did last year. And V3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and 1 are all copy and paste from previous years. Those don't change. The mission stays the same, policy stays the same, all of that is the same. The only difference in each year would be the new goals and objectives, which is in V2. I wanted to point that out because you may not recognize some of those things that are on there, such as RAB, project-based vouchers, or acquisition. We will be discussing that at a later date, but it has to be in the PHA plan. HUD did let me know that if we choose not to go with any of those options, that's fine. Just because it's in here does not mean we are held to it. In fact, this isn't the correct verbiage for it. If we do go one of those routes, I will have to amend this to HUD's very extensive language to cover it. So I don't, I didn't want that to scare you. We're not held to that, but it does have to be in there. It's just a tentative. And then we list our goals for the next five years to maintain our higher performance status, continue providing new sources and self-sufficiency information to residents and the public, and to increase the quality of our units. And the V3 progress report is based off of the goals that they made five years ago and just how we've, the steps that we've taken to meet those goals that were in the five-year plan. The biggest one is getting that high performer clause for, that's the first time in well over 11 years since our properties maintained that. So our goal is to keep that. But those are the only two sections that are new. Everything else is pretty general. I will answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Any else to add by staff? Citizens? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the public housing authority five-year plan.
Second. Moving second. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start right here, May.
The high performer award, is that an annual?
Since we got high performer, it actually bumps us to every three years. So that includes financial, management, occupancy. And they actually do a physical inspection of the property as well. When you get high performer, they only do that. Every, we get the, everything other than the physical is annual. And that is still standard. We are expecting the physical this year. This year will be our third year, so. And that's the big one. That's the one that everyone has to work the hardest on anything.
Good job.
I noticed there was a couple of concerns by residents having to do with the repositioning. From a 40,000-foot level, can you tell me what the repositioning conversion is? In general?
How, how much?
What I would say about that, we are going to have a study meeting regarding that on... So for the sake of time...
It's quite extensive.
It's fine. We'll get an explanation then.
Yes.
You'll get one.
I think there's several different options as far as what is permissible with some of the changes coming from HUD. Carrie will certainly package that in a digestible format. Like everything federal, it's overly complicated to talk about, I think.
So that's not held here, right?
Correct.
Do you allow it to be?
It'll be, it'll be down at Bondale.
Yes.
In their...
I thought that was the best way to allow my residents to attend. And I wanted you guys to be able to converse with them and get their opinion. And I wanted them to hear from you straightforward, what your thoughts or questions were. A lot of them are elderly, disabled, don't even have vehicles. So I really appreciate you guys going down there to give them that opportunity.
I'm happy to do it.
It would cut my drive in half.
Thank you for keeping us up to date and working so hard on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything else on the five-year plan? Anything else? Nothing else? Vote please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood? Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We are looking forward to 7:30 on February 11th, meeting down there. There'll be a special meeting of the council the Tuesday after our next meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Onto our next item, PT 19101, Wilkerson Crane reflat.
Rachel Klein, City Planner. As you said, this is a reflat for Wilkerson Crane. All memo provided to the council. There's a minor error. It's not 180 acres, it's 24.146. I've made that note update to the clerk. And the flat that's presented is correct. I just didn't type it right. You may recall the property from when we had rezoning last month. The church on the northeast corner had sold the property. And now the owners have requested to replat as opposed to a lot combination because there were some vacated roadways and things. And they want all the room to move with the least complications. So it was taken before the planning commission on December 17th and received a unanimous regulation of approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Anything additional from the staff? Seeing none, citizens? Thank you. I didn't entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the dedication of evenings and ride-aways as shown in the Wilkerson Crane reflat.
Second.
Moving second. Now, sir.
Ray, do you know of all the taxes and everything that were in that area are caught up now? The bad part of all this before?
The last time I looked on Windup County, it was good. I don't want to say I've looked today.
Correct. Interesting.
But in the past, yeah, they were good.
Did they fix the grading and all that? I know there was a dirt farm over there a little bit.
Yep. They addressed that. And of course, degrading will be required with the development. But the dirt mound that I heard about when I first got here was addressed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed several of the commission members mentioned about the hard surface and they're going with asphalt millings. What exactly is asphalt millings?
Recycled, cumbled-up asphalt that you think of perhaps cookie dough. And it falls apart, you push it back together.
Okay.
And it'll become cookie again.
I know there was some concern because of weight of vehicles, but that shouldn't be an issue at all?
The weight of the vehicles is a good reason why to actually have the millings because it will tear them up. It can then just be resurfaced. And that was in the site landscape plan review. And Commissioner Besmer was pretty darn excited that millings were going to be used because he had experienced that. And I call it recycled asphalt. If someone has a better explanation, please. I'd be happy to have a definition. That's just what I've always called it.
It's also called porous, it's exceptional moisture in our hard surface?
At some point, it will actually become impervious because of weight. But usually, it needs to be degraded before that happens. So the type of surface that they're using is being factored into their stormwater plan. They had originally requested gravel and I said, "No." And when they said, "Well, you really want concrete," I said, "Let's talk about this." Because you don't really want just a huge slab of concrete with stormwater either. So speaking with the designer, with the engineer rather, milling seemed to be the best way to go. And it was nice to have Mr. Besmer's confidence on that.
Millings actually provides a positive in that.
Nothing else? And vote please.
Matthew?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood? Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Now the motion passes.
Onto item number seven, Shawnee Properties Settlement.
We previously discussed this matter, the city does own a 12-acre parcel generally located on 43rd Street and Frisbee in the city of Shawnee, just essentially directly across the river from Oak Street. It's 12, like I said, 12 acres, that was originally where the waterworks plant and wells were located for the city until the great flood of 1951 caught out the flood, which destroyed all of it. It has been used for miscellaneous things throughout the years by the city, however, it is now more or less being used for, as it's noted in the memo, mushroom hunting, animal hunting. Really appreciated that when I read that for the first time for me. We did open up bids, or we did advertise for the sale of this, opened up bids, posted the property with a memo bid of $139,900, which was considered to be the market rate. Two bids were open, the highest being Blue Shawnee LLC at $150,000. We did also receive a request of comps from real estate, we were able to give one back, which the comps actually came in at about $11,000 per acre for the comp used, so we are looking at about $12,500 per acre with the sale of this property at $150,000. Again, we're looking for a motion to approve the sale of this 12-acre parcel for $150,000 to Blue Shawnee LLC. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Anything from the citizens? Same then, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the sale of the 12-acre parcel at 43rd Street and Frisbee in Shawnee, Kansas, to Blue Shawnee LLC for a sale price of $150,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the real estate sales contract.
Second.
Questions, concerns, comments, I think we started there, so we'll start here.
Sounds like a good deal. I'm sure based upon your memo, the Shawnee Police Department would be very happy to. That's it.
Glad we set the curve on the high end.
Do we know if Shawnee, Blue Shawnee, sorry, is that the developer that was interested, or is that one of the adjacent landowners?
Related to the developer, that's.
It stands like clear the area.
John, would you have to know, even if this is on the Shawnee-Johnson County side, would we be able to use this as a comparable comp for land on our side in Orange County and in Wyandotte County?
Oh, I don't know, I would probably, not being an appraiser, I would probably tell you no, just given that it's in a different position altogether. I think Greg would certainly be in a better position to do a comment on things, not to say you need to by any stretch, but we don't, I have no idea, to be quite honest. It gives you a good idea of what the cost is, but.
Do you know, is this considered to be, or is this going to be used for industrial land?
It's my understanding that there is a plan being put forward in that area on 43rd Street to become a sort of an industrial site, yes.
My caveat to that was with our 800 acres, we've had difficulties getting appraised properly for debt and all, I was curious if we can submit this to Wyandotte County as a potential reappraisal comp?
That I don't know, that would certainly be something that could come up in the board of equalization, certainly, but that would be, I said, idle.
Thank you, I just wanted that on the record.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Same then, vote please.
Wood? Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Absolutely, yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, Mayor.
Yes.
Woo, that was a nice, he was on it.
On to item number eight, 2020 City Operations Computer Upgrade.
True municipal fashion, money in, money out, we are looking for expenditure of about $122,000 to upgrade several different computers, as well as a few other miscellaneous items related to communications. Most of the computers that the city has were purchased in order in 2013, keeping in mind that the average life of a computer is around five years. Some of these devices have been replaced throughout the year based on necessity, including hard drive failures, mine included, to accommodate software needs, and also there is a significant change in Microsoft at the end of 2019, where they are no longer supporting certain software, so this is unnecessary expenditure, but again, this is predominantly for the police department, you will see on the quote, but this also takes into consideration almost every other department at the city. Funding for this, we are looking at using carryover from the 2019 budget, it will essentially cover contingencies that we have the 2020 budget, but for all practical purposes, we will have a basically that we can carryover from 2019 that we can whatever utilize for this, so again, looking for a motion to approve this purchase.
Thank you very much. Anything from the citizens? Same then, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of computers and software from Linklight Networking and Microsoft for a combined amount of $121,963.50.
We've been seconded, questions, concerns, comments, we'll start here, sir.
Old records, how do the old records?
We back up everything, so we take out the hard drive from the standpoint of backing it up, a lot of files are actually kept on our server, that is something that we've upgraded previously in the past, and we actually have, I think, three or four different servers throughout the city, so most of the digital records are maintained through those mechanisms.
I'm not really even numbered, right, it's approximately 71 computers, and then phone units on top of that.
Yep.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip? Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood? Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number nine, Public Works Radios.
This is something that we did have somewhat budgeted last year, 2019, but needed to pull funding from it to utilize in different avenues, but what this is, is a radio replacement from the Public Works Department. For the last several years, they relied on cell phones, initially that was a endeavor where they had the old radio slash cellphone idea, that hasn't really worked, because that stopped being utilized. This is a pretty significant issue, especially during weather events, case in point when we had the significant tornado event to the west of us, where we lost cell phone power as well, we also lost the ability to communicate with the Public Works Department, as well as communicating with some other departments within internally. So again, this is something that's been in the works for about a year. We have been in contact with the unified government, Amber, Frank have been working, trying to get this sorted out as well, as far as vendors are concerned. We have been able to arrive at a cost which is a little over $91,000 for these radios, again, this is something that we're looking at, 2019 carryover to finance, and then we'll also be looking at eliminating some cell phones that will be a cost savings, just also to keep in mind that the average life of a radio is about 10 to 15 years, so this is an expense, albeit it's a large expense, but the lifespan of a radio certainly pays for itself over the monthly subscription costs that we're paying annually in cellphone bills. Again, looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the radios, as well as the installation with 911 custom for an amount not to exceed $91,312.50.
Thank you. Anything to add? Very good. Citizens? Same then, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of radios from Motorola Solutions at 911 custom for a combined amount not to exceed $91,312.50.
Second. Very good, and we'll start right here with that programming of the radios by the unified government, what's that mean?
They effectively set it up so it reads automatically, so if you go in, it's an encrypted system more often than not, I'm not sure actually if public works is as well. But our police department utilizes the same thing, basically, again, they just set it up so the frequency read correctly, that's a service that's typically provided by the county, and this is the case, just getting ready to go.
Just makes me somewhat concerned, so I'm glad that you and the departments are on top of that in what is required of the unified government. Other questions, concerns, comments, we'll start right here.
I was curious, is this a digital, or like AM, or like, is this a digital CB style radio?
No, this is digital communication system, very, almost identical to police and fire.
Are we going to have to have a transmission tower for this?
No. It's already in the system.
Gotcha, okay.
Was there other bids? Was there other bids?
This is a cooperative purchase, and so Motorola has a statewide bid or something like that, and so we went ahead and rode load with that, all your fire equipment, all your police, everybody in law enforcement and in public service that is pursuing the Motorola system will follow this bid, it's a government bid essentially. Plus, that's what our fire police have, so we kind of have a desire to stay with the same thing. It's also the unified government promotes.
Are there ongoing fees?
I think so, unless it's through unified government, and it would be, it seems to be the city already pays a kind of fee of police and fire support, and this is supposed to be absorbed into that, if there is one.
The county management typically, again, the case here, is set up to help kind of provide the services for our communication is concerned, Frank's alluding to as well, except the city does pay through 911, these things are dispatched, that helps set up the framework for the communication system, so there's not a, Motorola will not be sending us a monthly bill or anything like that for this expense, this is, this will eliminate some of the expense for AT&amp;T that we're getting charged right now.
I misunderstood, I thought, you wondered whether unified government was charging us a, like, no, Motorola, they, they're selling equipment.
Echoing your concerns about, you know, the, do we have confidence, because weren't we kind of hung out to dry on the last system that they were supposed to help us with?
That, yeah, this is, this is a little bit different of a system, this is, this is really just literally just taking equipment, a radio, purchasing it from Motorola, and then getting it set up on the network that already exists for the police department. What we got left out to dry for a couple hundred thousand dollars was for a, for a system for, yeah, with record managed RMS system, which still, I think to this day is not working correctly, and we have since, we're no longer a part of that.
And the computer aspect of the radio communication, this is a trunk system by Motorola, it's in 800 megahertz, so you're going to have, you're going to have the public works and the police and the fire all working on somewhat shared frequencies, and the computer will control who is able to hear which discussions at what time, so it's, I mean, this is standard.
Yeah, the issue with you, the other thing wasn't communications, it was software, computer software.
They should have helped us with the support of the software.
Right.
That's what, this is non-written verbal with remus scare.
Right.
Yeah, similar to, similar to the way it was done before all that.
Yeah, so this is just another example, Tivoli, and it utilizes a radio frequency that is maintained by the county, all it is, is its channel we go to, and several people are on it, again, the police department is a encrypted channel, but again, the idea is that we have a public works dedicated channel currently, it's just not being utilized, I think we have a few vehicles that do have units inside of them, but again, this is going to be a little bit of a learning curve for public works as well, because we just haven't had to utilize radios as frequently as most public works departments do, but again, this is, this is simply the cost of the equipment and some labor as far as having it set up properly, the only thing that we're probably looking at is, is if we had did some things like that, we might have to put up a repeater tower and things like that, but most of those things are already being addressed because of police and fire.
Sir, do you have something? Nothing else? Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood? Gurley?
Yes.
Kip? Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves? Motion passes.
Onto item number 10, ordinance number 2488, the KDHE loan for water meter upgrades.
Frank Abart, Public Works Director. Yeah, thanks, welcome back, man. So you may recall a discussion we had, I believe, back in August, where we had talked about upgrading our water meter systems, so that they could be moved to more of a digital platform, so that they could be read and be more accurate, and as far as record keeping and tracking and things like that, it was going to be in a much better position to do some of those things. Right now, we have largely, what is it, I'm going to call it a conglomeration of at least three different models of meters, and they will all radio read when they work, but a person has to go out and actually get a radio read on each one of those things every month. This will essentially make this more of a radio communication in a digital format, that it can all be done at once, it will also retain and retrieve all of the lifecycle and processes of each meter, if you want, so if any one of you wanted to see, well, what's the history of my meter? When am I, you know, am I using a lot of my own water? When am I, on an hourly basis or whatever? You know, these things will have that kind of capability, and it will help Hilli's group, the finance group, answer a lot of questions when people come in and are concerned because they're using a lot more water than they used to, because the type of machinery that she can pull it right up and print out a report and give it to them if one's in, you can see what hours and how much was utilized, so it's pretty much instantaneous data. As a result of our discussions back when I think it was August, we went ahead and pursued a loan application through KDHE, a state revolving loan, and we were granted that loan at unnerving sometimes how many months it takes to get the paperwork through, but we stand at this particular point with a state revolving loan fund of about $500,000, and the loan is for 10 years, 1.66%, I believe, I mean, it's incredible. It's a 10-year loan, so in your documents, you'll see 20 different payments, well, that's twice a year. That first confused me, about 1.6 for 20 years, but no, it's 20 payments over 10 years, and so I believe it's $27,000 some odd cents per payment, twice a year. So I would entertain any questions you have about what we're proposing to pursue.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from other staff? Citizens?
You said this is a radio, radio frequency, digital radio?
It is, yes.
Okay, so someone still have to drive by the house to pick up that signal?
No.
So there would be broadcasting a signal on, on an FCC-controlled frequency?
Yes.
Okay, for future technology development, would there be 5G compatible? Because 5G is coming, and it's a.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that today right now, but that is a good question.
And the thing to maybe keep in mind too is the average life of a, of a meter is about ten years, so that's one thing that...
So they're shorter than they used to be? Because old water meters used to be twenty, twenty-five years.
I think they've always been about ten, we probably have seen it in times where they've been more often than not, but yeah, they, they tell you that you really should be looking to replace them by the time they're getting to ten years, and that's one of the things that I think we're looking at here, is trying to get all these meters, similarly to our computers, trying to get these on a replacement schedule that is sustainable, so that we're not necessarily having to do these in huge costs like this, but rather, you know, looking at it and saying, can we do five, you know, fifty percent this year, twenty-five percent this year, again, some of the, I think the issue that we're running into with the meters right now is that we've got several different types of meters with regard to how they're being read, manufactured, what have you, so that kind of ties in with what we're doing with the encode process, the software that you all approved to actually go and change our utility billing software, we're getting that up to speed at the same time that we're doing this, so all these things are kind of coming together at a, at a good time, it's, it's a laborious process and a laborious process from the city staff's standpoint, because it's additional duties that we're having to do beyond what we typically need to do, but the fact of the matter is, the efficiency, as Frank alluded to, we're not having to go out and physically have to drive a car around here, or as 5G becomes more and more prevalent in this area, we can utilize that as well as, as far as pressing a button and turning off an auto meter because somebody moved away or moved into a community or into the community, or if somebody thought that there was an issue with their meter, we can go that exact minute, press a button, or you can at home and say, again, as Frank alluded to, what is my meter doing from water, you know, can I isolate that within an hour, we're having to do that from a, more or less a manual way right now, which is, is a pain, it's a great service, we're just trying to make that service more accessible to the public.
After that, to mention to the new financial software, we already have a meeting with the providers of the meter thing, where we're sure that they're gonna talk to each other and play together well, so they're supposed to integrate, and apparently, this is not the first time they've worked together, so, which is a good thing.
Very good. Anything else from citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Ray, I make a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight.
No, I'm sorry.
It's a card.
Sorry.
Make motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-A, authorizing execution of the loan agreement with KDHE for water meter upgrades.
Second. Moving second, questions, concerns, comments from the council, we'll start over here.
Answered by a minority.
Nothing addition?
Meter replacements all external, there won't be any significant downtime to the homeowner?
There shouldn't be. Should be as simple as removing the old one, putting a new one in, so yeah, there's probably gonna be an hour, maybe.
I was impressed about the, the prepayment, obviously, because I think they try to sneak stuff like that in. It's not gonna...
You may have wanted to say, how long approximately would it take now to get all these installed?
I would say we're still talking from now till the end of this year, I would hope to be substantially complete by November, the longest time it's probably gonna take to get them, because we're gonna need to order a thousand or eleven hundred of these, and, you know, they don't really have those laying around, so it's, there's probably gonna be one to two months in this lead time, once we place an order.
These are going in individual halves?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's more than eleven.
We don't need to replace all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
As Sean had mentioned earlier too, does this have the capability for on and off electronically within a meter?
Yes.
Remotely?
Yes. But we're not gonna replace all of them.
Correct, just these.
Right. Well, there's gonna be maybe a hundred or two hundred that we're gonna make that have that, but the rest of them should be able to be adaptable to it.
Oh, is that a different cost?
Because there's an upcharge, yeah.
Ah.
There's an upcharge of five, three, three hundred fifty bucks of crap to have that.
To be able to do the on and off.
Have that solenoid, you can do it.
Correct.
There's some we're gonna do though, but not all eleven hundred.
And will we still have a manual option with that?
Yes, that still all works, that'll all play together with that system.
Do we have any, I guess, contingency or cush room for this, because I know on several of the houses that Mr. Tyner and I have worked on over the years, we've had the equipment just fall out of the way for the lines, the, the meter fits, we've had to have it replaced because of things not shutting off, with the pipes being corroded, or with our hard water, so do we have anything in place for when that happens? Because if you go, or you know, check, we replaced a lot of this stuff on a shite league, right, a lot of the older areas, are we gonna be connected to predominantly new lines, or?
This will be, can't really say, I guess.
Okay.
I'm gonna say we've got a little over half, the city's already on this system, so we got about a thousand or eleven hundred that we need to install, now whether those would be in older places or newer, can't really tell you off the top of my head.
Gotcha.
What your concern is, I guess, is that when we go in to remove the old meter...
You gotta pop those brackets off.
There's gonna be damage...
Correct.
To one side or the other.
Yes.
Okay.
Because you have your fund down.
I will take that into consideration, so we're gonna have to make sure we have funding available.
Okay, awesome, let's just wanna go over the check, I'm just seeing if that will...
I hadn't thought about that, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I decided to show you some houses on which I know that's wrong.
We're gonna have to fix it somehow to make the water work.
Correct, and that's what I was, another one of my worries was the contingency from the city side, when that happens, I know that typically the resident has to cover from outflow side to their house for the hot water here, and I just wanna make sure that we're not shafting residents in between, and I don't mean...
I'm saying, in this case, we're the ones that are doing the improvement project, I would advocate that the city pays for making that adjustment.
That'd be supported.
Or I will put the caveat, if they're, if they're connected to a lead pipe or something.
Correct, okay.
It would be a whole other regulation issue that, you know, that may have to be replaced at the owner's expense ultimately, in their property.
Yeah.
You know, to their house.
Word one, I know that there was a couple, at least that we've seen, that if you use galvanized pipe to their main unit, and then they just switch it off, so I just wanna make sure we had a contingency for that, we acknowledge it before we start tearing them all out.
And I hadn't thought of that, in fact, we had contingency, but that wasn't what it was for.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's what I wanted to bring up, because I...
It was now.
Yeah, I know that it's happened, because we've been, I used to work with our former director, and we had some, we had, we just worked with the city, we'd do it ourselves, and they have to reimburse us for it, so I appreciate you for pointing that out.
Sean, you mentioned, Frank, this is for both of you, you've mentioned we didn't wanna get ourselves into having to do something all at once and have some of these fixed out, just some things you mentioned, right, help me understand, you said that there's some of the ones that we have right now are compatible and they're all...
They would work.
Okay, and then the, there's, you said, you know, a couple hundred more, or, I don't know, you said...
There's a little over twenty-eight hundred in the year in the city, and we know that there's a thousand to eleven hundred that we're gonna have to purchase or replace.
Now, you, and Sean, you said that approximately ten years, okay, and we didn't wanna get into having to do everything at once, but when you're putting these approximate thousand or so in, are those gonna be put in pretty much simultaneously, or will that, those be, just the nature of installing them be placed, you know, X number every couple of months and stuff? Because what I'm saying is, in a ten-year period, we might be faced with having to redo...
Sure.
Am I fitting this?
Yeah.
Try to explain it correctly.
I would say, I would expect these, these to be installed between now and November.
Okay.
But starting in twenty twenty-one, we need to have a specific program in place that's gonna start replacing thirty to fifty a year of the older ones.
Okay.
Minimum of thirty, I'd say, that way when you get to a ten-year...
Right.
You're in sync, you're doing it, you know...
I just, okay, because I saw this, that number you, approximate, number you gave me, I'm going, we're putting those all in within a couple of months, and, and ten years from now would be...
No, I'm hoping we're in way better shape than today.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need that, definitely about fifty to about two-hundred-and-fifty a year, over, every year for about two, three years.
If you wanted to get the rest of it, yeah.
Well, to get to twenty-eight hundred, you're not quite there yet. Anything else?
No.
Go, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gerlach?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could request to the council, we have two esteemed guests awaiting their attention, and I've been, I've been told they're known to bite, the canines are actually here, I was thinking that maybe perhaps we have the next item, we could recess, or whatever you see is appropriate, to bring those animals in, and at least let everybody see both the canine scout, our historic canine, and then our new canine.
Here you go.
We're gonna take a short recess for about five minutes, and then we'll reconvene. Our next item is one hundred and thirty-eighth Street Project Phase One Property Acquisition, and we'll be going into an executive session, just for informational purposes, we will, after our short, brief recess of five minutes, we'll come back here and then go into executive session.
Back into executive session? So we're comfortable?
Okay.
We need more time. We got another question. So we're going back in, so I would entertain a motion, action one.
Make a motion, go into executive session, discuss one hundred and thirty-eighth Street Property Acquisition pursuant to the exception for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine, subsection B six. The open meeting, we will resume at ten o'clock, give ourselves ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Give ourselves full ten minutes, okay, or how about ten oh five?
Yep, ten oh five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two and other, both Gerlach and Council Lady Gerlach, and Council Person Mackey, sorry, both have the same and left in.
Nancy, what use counsel?
For our third action, and I would, I would entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to oversee and execute necessary property acquisitions, temporary and permanent easements, and right to waive for the one hundred and thirty-eighth Street Project Phase One.
No, move?
Move.
Movement seconded, vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Figure of state?
Yeah, there.
Same, okay. Motion passed.
On to reports of the city managers. Thank you, John.
Thanks.
We're almost done, see that.
Tell us about thrift way, tell us about thrift way.
I'll get to that.
You waited this long. Number one, number one, no Starry, our, the Starry Night Dance, unfortunately, has been canceled, so I did have a report, one of the notes that was, was going to be canceled, low sign up, unfortunately.
Sorry.
It's similar to our, only our mother-daughter, father-daughter, other way.
Father-daughter?
Yeah. Which, that's the reason we were putting it together. Chamber, we talked about that earlier, I think, no, we didn't, Chamber two-twenty-eight, February twenty-eighth, the city is sponsoring a table at that event, so if you would like to attend, please get in touch with Chris Hahn, and we'll try to get that all sorted out, I don't know, I don't have the details, I think it starts at six o'clock. It's the Chamber, Chamber Angle, which is at the Fuel House, I believe we had that there last year as well.
Casey, or he's been...
He retired.
He got injured, I don't know if he's still the one that's...
Yeah, he's not, he, he's no longer the...
This is replacement.
Also, we talked about this earlier, what I was gonna say, but again, just a reminder, the special meeting pertaining to public housing to be held at Bonneville is scheduled for February eleventh, ten oh two, we're looking at six-thirty starting time for that.
I have a motion.
I kinda think we were gonna change it, understanding that everybody doesn't wanna sit here.
But you'll send out something?
Yes, yep, I'm gonna send out another notice, Carrie was wanting to check, other than that, I have nothing else. Very good. Oh, sorry, Brickway.
Yeah.
The Brickway has changed hands, it was bought by some other business property owners in town, so we have been engaged with them about available options via CDVG, which is a community development block grant administered to the state, Amber has been having those conversations with the state, trying to get all the information on that, unfortunately, it seems like every time we talk to them, the idea of what a CDVG program is changed, but we are working through that, but again, that, that has changed, these are individuals that I think have a very civic-minded attitude towards that property, and are looking for, first and foremost, a solution that removes the blight, and then from there, trying to figure out more of a long-term solution to that location, so we are excited about the potential of working with them and trying to figure out what type of partnership the city can offer with getting that back to a purposeful safety.
Nice.
That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. City council, I understand, I didn't really start it last, so we'll start here.
Nothing.
Sir?
Nothing. As may the show, sir. Nothing.
Sir?
I was cleaning off my desk, I was gonna make, we'll make mine really quick, I was cleaning off my desk and saw my UG letter, and they were patting themselves on the back for the fifth year in a row for lowering taxes, and I would like to encourage anybody and everybody to remind them that there's two other cities within their plan that they have in touch, and they never lowered, at least in the next five years, if they're patting themselves on the back for, they didn't lower our taxes, and they use the star grants money to do that, and they didn't help us at all, so please remind your local officials, commission, and House of Representatives, that there's two other cities in the way that can be...
I just, to once again say, we need to do something for Bonner Animal Rescue, and keep going, finding a place for that, you're in this community, rather than, you know, sending them out, and I'm sorry, I'm in the section where the new animals, boy, there was a lot of work that went into that, the new animal regulations and things, wow, you know, but I, I really wanna speak up for Bonner Animal Rescue, finding a place in the city for it.
Do you have any update on the kennel?
We are, SFS, who have been working with us for a long period of time, the police department and the nineteen eighteen building, has offered to come take a look at that tomorrow, and just kinda give us their professional opinion of what is feasible at that location. I don't have any other update than, other than, again, we're, we're looking at it first and foremost as a facility that we can use as an impounding facility, and then trying to have some level of partnership with Bonner Animal Rescue, or a similar group to assistant adoptions within the city.
Yes.
Yeah, Chris, be careful when you say, we're, we're sending them out, we're not sending them out, we're...
Working with a partnership.
Well, I don't know where people are coming up with that, they have been a, you know... They have been a, you know, nonprofit organization. We're not sending them, we're trying to take care of what we need to take care of first and that's to have an impound facility and...
No, I meant sending the animals down. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I used to go down without announcing. I'm great. I've got a big plus now.
Rocked out in this teacher with him.
Oh, nice. It's...
I don't even understand the words that you're saying.
I don't know what you just said, but I liked it.
It's important to communicate what we're communicating.
No. No. I just...
Well, as far as the mayor's report, it was, thank you very much for all of our work that went in last meeting. Thank you, Councilman Stevens, for the great leadership you had. I was sorry to miss it, but however, I was out of the country and had a great trip. I did get to visit the oldest city known on earth, Jericho. We think we have a hundred, a concern with a 100-year-old building. They've been around for 10,000 years. So they, it was something to go around and round about and I didn't like it either.
Sir, your comments?
The, back close to home, continue our discussions with local mayors in the unified government in Edwardsville. And one of the things that we're kicking around right now is a town hall meeting that will include both the unified government as well as Edwardsville, maybe in a joint meeting late spring. The unified government is doing that in regional meetings in their area and we suggested that they also bring county information to our area. And so we'll utilize that to help spread the word through our communities. And it'll probably be a joint meeting sometime in late spring when we know more of the, as we're working our way through the budget, preliminary budget information. Also, there seems to be a big surge in our police department and public, enforcing public safety. I would encourage everyone, if they have received any comments or complaints from individuals, to pass them along to the police department if at all necessary. There's also a great number of compliments that I've been receiving on the general improvement in the safety of our community and specifically traffic. So as many times as I've had people complain about the speeding tickets they're receiving, I've also received compliments on how nice it is to drive in marsh marines. So please take all of that with a grain of salt. I try to and pass along any concerns you have to the police department certainly or to Sean, our city manager. I don't have any much else to add except please start now supporting not only the trivia night for the Bonner Police Canine Program that'll be in March, but also the Chamber Annual Banquet that will be the end of February, and also Jazz on the Lake, which is coming up, I believe, the 22nd. And so all of those need all of our support, but also not just our own support, but also the support of those that we come into contact with. So please be good PR people and pass that word along. If you need additional information, we have it all through the city and they can give you all the contact information, times and everything if you need it, but please spread the word. The Jazz on the Lake benefits the library, the Chamber Commerce does quite a bit of civic work, scholarships and the canine program. I think that's a great, great program to get behind also. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add unless I stand for a question. Oh, I would like to declare that Bonners Springs as a city supports the Kansas City Chiefs in their World Series championship and...
And baseball?
Yeah, it's sports, sports ball. Yeah. World championship of the oblong shaped ball. Sports ball.
Okay.
So I decree that officially that Bonners Springs supports the Kansas City Chiefs.